Thank you.
Somebody was being joshed.
Same point.
Wait.
Britain.
You're good.
Okay, I'd like to call the Tuesday, March twenty first, Lacey Plank Commission meeting to order. I'm looking for approval on the agenda and consent items.
Someone seconded.
Who seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll move on to public comments.
So this is the opportunity for anybody in the public to address the planning commission. We don't have anybody in the council chambers here tonight, but if any of the attendees in the audience want to address the planning commission, this is the time to be able to do that. You can do that by using the raise hand function of the webinar. And then, once you do that, we'll be able to bring you in. So just one, one more time, if there's anybody out there that wants to address the planning commission and do that, use the raise hand function and we can go ahead and bring you in. Going once, going twice. I don't see that we have any public comment.
Okay, will we want to commission member reports? Have a think.
Come on to me because I have something, but I need my notes.
Mark, your report.
Oh, yeah, I attended the short course in local planning and I thought that was a really interesting place to, you know, gather a lot of information and learn about the different acts that are protecting the environment. So I thought that was a wonderful opportunity to, to learn more.
No question. Nothing from myself. Okay, we'll.
I wanted to come back.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I just had a question because I read an article about the Olympia Aquatics Center and I wondered if you had any insight into that. Just, you know, why Olympia, so Lacey considered anything, just any insight into the development of that and starting up that. So I just thought it was pretty interesting. I think it'd be great for the community, but just was curious on that.
So my, my understanding is the city of Olympia started a feasibility process with a private consultant group or something to look at the feasibility of, of owning, operating and managing a swimming pool, indoor swimming facility. And in doing so, I think they, they offered to the city of Lacey and the city of Tomwater, the opportunity to basically kind of like partner with each other through the feasibility process. My understanding is that the city of Lacey and the city of Tomwater have backed out of that process now and that so the city of Olympia is going forward with that on their own. So just as a reminder, the way kind of pools are handled in Lacey is that we have partnerships with North Thurston Public Schools to be able to use their pools. So things like, you know, Parks and Rec, aquatic classes, swimming lessons, those kinds of things. We hold those, we, we do those, but they're held at the high schools that have swimming pools. So, uh, Jimon Lion, River Ridge, does North Thurston have a pool? Not sure. Do they? Okay. Um, so I, all the, all of Lacey High Schools have, have pools. So I, I think the feeling is from, from Lacey is that, well, we don't necessarily need an aquatic center because we have, you know, use of the, the, the school pools. And the public pool and aquatics in general is a very expensive proposition. And, um, you know, I, I don't know what this study will bear out. Again, this is something that the city of Olympia is doing at this point, so we're not involved in it. But, um, in general, aquatic centers do not pencil out. They lose more money than what they gain in any kind of revenue. So, you know, they're a little bit of a tough pill to swallow budgetarily. So I think that's primarily why we, we pulled out. Not only do we have pools elsewhere, but it would be a big budget hit to do that, so.
Will it prevent them from maybe moving forward without having Lacey and Tomwater as participants in it or?
Hard to say. Uh, the city of Olympia has the benefit of a metropolitan parks district. So they actually four parks, and I don't know if aquatic centers are, would be included in this or not, but they actually have a constant running stream through property taxes that pay for parks and park services, parks maintenance that we do not have in Lacey. So that was a voter approved measure a few years ago that, that basically put additional property tax requirements on Olympia residents to pay for that Metropolitan Parks District. So they have additional funding that I guess that, that we do not, that might help their cause. But again, it's a, at this point, not something that I think that we're involved in.
Well, for not knowing a lot, you knew a lot. So thank you. I appreciate your explanation. So thank you very much. That was it.
All right. Department report.
Grant, do you want to give updates on staffing? Grant, there.
Sorry. Uh, no, go ahead, Ryan. You can take it, take it from here.
Okay, sure. So a couple, at least want to give you a quick update on some, some staffing. I, I think Grant mentioned at our joint meeting a while ago that, that last year was the, the year of change. Well, if last year was the year of change, this is the year of more change. Because we have a lot of staff movement in our department. So I think you, you all maybe know a couple of our current planning staff, Sarah Schelling, a senior planner that's worked here for seventeen years. She moved up to a project planner position. So, um, uh, somebody that works directly with the director to do special projects essentially, which vacated her position. Reese Phant, our assistant planner, was able to move into that position. And now we're advertising for the assistant planner position. So we have a vacant planner position at this point. And then we are also, um, as you may be aware, we, we were budgeted for, uh, twenty twenty-three, a climate and sustainability coordinator. And that, those, um, interviews, uh, first round of interviews ended today. So we'll likely have somebody, uh, we have, we got a really good pool of candidates out of that. We, Grant and I both looked at, uh, twenty different qualified applicants. So, yeah, really good pool. So we're, we're down to three finalists at this point on that. So that's moving forward. And then, uh, we are also moving forward with our, our housing coordinator position, uh, that was also budgeted in the twenty twenty-three budget that those first rounds of those interviews are on Friday. So, um, some good news, um, you know, we have some turnover and, um, you know, some vacant positions, but also some good news that kind of help is on the way. It's exciting to be able to do, we'll be able to do some more related to climate, you know, those are, that's a lot of what Hans and Grant do. Um, and then as well as that housing, which is part of what I, I do with some others. So looking to take off one of the ten hats and give it to somebody else, um, at this point. So, yeah, I think that's about it for our department reports. Want to give you all kind of an idea where we're at on some of the staffing things.
Flexibility.
Yeah. Any questions?
Twenty applicants is great.
Okay, so at this point, um, I will hold our regular meeting and open up the public hearing on the capital facilities plan interim update. Brian will present.
Yeah, I'll just do a really brief summary. I know that, um, we don't have anybody here, City Hall, to testify. We may have somebody in the audience, um, and we can use the raise hand function again, um, to bring them in if, if we need to. A little bit of a reminder, so this is kind of a, for lack of a better term, a procedural item to add the construction of the new police station to our existing capital facilities plan. Uh, there's information in the staff report about what a capital facilities plan needs to contain. Essentially, it's a mandatory element of our, of the Growth Management Act and it's part of our comprehensive plan to make sure that we're, um, doing, you know, we're planning for our growth in our facilities and we're budgeting for them appropriately. We're right now working on updating a full rewrite of our capital facilities plan with an emphasis on our general government buildings. And so the reason this is an interim update is because that isn't quite done yet. That full update will be completed and part of the planning commission's review coming later this spring and into the summer. In order to use certain pots of money with our new police station, including real estate excise tax and councilmatic bonds, we need to be able to put this into our capital facilities plan to show our work. Right now, the capital facilities plan identifies the project, but only as far as preliminary design. Um, and we're well past that point now. We're actually to the sixty percent design phase on the, on the police station. So at this point, um, you know, we're, we need to, we need to put the full, complete build out of the, of the police station in the plan. We're anticipating that it will start construction in twenty twenty-four. Just a reminder too, we're also working with St. Martin's Abbey to obtain property. I think you're maybe all aware, where the police station, future police station will go. There's actually a sign there now kind of showing where, where it will be located across Third Avenue, just north of City Hall here. The still facility itself will contain about forty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet with, uh, the amenities of a modern police station, almost doubling in size our, our existing station. So it would, it would house all of our police staff and volunteer programs as well as a community room that would double as our new emergency operations center, which is a really vital part of what the city does. Unfortunately, right now we have an emergency operations center here at City Hall. It's on the second floor. But unfortunately, because we're so out of space here in City Hall, those are being used as, as offices by employees. So, uh, it used to be essentially a functioning emergency operations center. It's, the, the infrastructure is still there, but we have employees basically, you know, working out of those stations, those spots now. So the E O C would actually transition over to the police station, which is a logical place for it to be. But also besides to handle secure parking for staff and fleet vehicles, as well as have electric vehicle integration and be able to accommodate the growth in the vehicles as well, um, and then spaces for processing and evidence as well. The last thing I'll, I'll mention is at the last meeting where we talked about the capital facilities plan is the question was raised and I'm, I'm not exactly sure who raised it, but about how many years of growth would the, the police station accommodate? So I reached out to the staff here that's helping lead the, the design with the design team. And based on their estimate, the, the building design program would accommodate about fifteen to twenty years of growth. Um, and so that's not a significant amount of time. It's so, you know, their, their thought is, well, it's gonna, it's gonna double the existing station and it will get us a certain amount of growth. But, um, if we accommodate more than the fifteen to twenty years, it's really going to push a very expensive project even higher in the, in the cost. Um, and so the thought is, well, you know, we need to probably do this a little bit incrementally and start with kind of a, a police station that then could be potentially expanded upon if and when we need to get there, um, rather than creating a big station now with unused spaces and things like that. They also said fifteen to twenty years is an estimate based on things like annexation and growth in the community that could accelerate, right? So fifteen to twenty years could come down really fast if we start annexing, you know, large areas of population and those kinds of things. So with that, um, that's the information that I had for you tonight. There is a, um, attachment that's in your packet that actually replay would replace this page with a page that's in our current capital facilities plan. Just as a reminder, the, the police station itself is about a fifty-three million dollar project. It does identify the years of, of, uh, the funds that they'll be expended as well as what funds that those dollars will come out of as well. So this is what the, the sheet would actually be replaced within our capital facilities plan with the, kind of the the spreadsheets in your, in your packet. So the purpose of tonight is conduct a public hearing to take public testimony. After the conclusion of the, taking the testimony, the planning commission has requested to make a formal recommendation on this to the city council, which is the next step, which the, the city council would make be the final approval in, in amending the, the capital facilities plan. Um, I did not receive any written public comment. I have not heard from anybody, so I don't expect there to be a lot of comments tonight. But, um, there is somebody in the audience, so we can see if they're interested in participating or not.
Can I say a question first?
Yeah.
With the fifteen to twenty year lifespan of it, now how expandable or, um, how, you know, is there adjacent land? Is there adjacent space where if we were able to expand it or needed to expand it, say it ten years or fifteen years or whatever, is that is, is that incorporated in the current design of the building such that that would be, you know, cost effective to do or more cost realistic to do?
I think so. Um, you know, they're, they're going to into it with, with eyes wide open, open to make sure that we're able to add on. Also, you know, you need to think about too, the potential to go, um, vertical. So, you know, this is, I think, to a building that is expandable, not only kind of horizontally, but vertically as well. Where we're probably more likely to run out of space on the ground is for things like vehicles. So, you know, we, we have a, a large fleet of cars that need a place to park. Some, some departments have a program where the officer actually takes a vehicle home. Our officers don't have that, so they actually have to park their vehicle here and it's shared. Um, and so, you know, that, that's where we've likely run out of room because it's hard to, unless we're building a parking garage or something like that, you know, there's little space to be able to expand the fleet. So like I mentioned in the presentation, it's really important that we plan for that expansion of the fleet over time as well. So, but yeah, it, it is, it will be designed to be expanded upon. You know, given that fifteen to twenty years at this point doesn't sound like it's very too long down, down the road.
I think you might have brought this up the last time we were speaking about it, but what's the plan to use for the current facility?
Yeah, good question, Mark. So, um, right now we're going through, uh, as I mentioned, a robust process to look at all of our facilities, all of our buildings. And as a part of that, we're looking at City Hall. Um, City Hall is running out of room for our employees here. And so the idea is, well, maybe after the police vacate and they go across the street to a new facility, maybe we can start putting employees in the police station. The police station is, um, it, the, the condition is very poor. It had, it's a C M U block construction, so it's not easily, easily, it's not easy to modify, um, that space, uh, because it's, it's C M U block. Um, and it has a, a fire system that it may not even function any longer. And so the, the amount of, um, retrofits, we would have to do that building to put employees in it would be substantial. Um, and so we're actually recommending that either number one be demolished or number two be just mothballed um, until we can find another use to potentially put in that, in that space. Because it's so difficult to be able to retrofit that for any other use other than a police station. And then also given the condition, it just, it's not. What's that?
You own the land underneath it.
Correct, right. So we actually did a little bit of a study to say, okay, what should we do with City Hall, you know, in general? And, and as soon as you start working, getting into tearing down walls and, and doing big remodels, it actually, right now in today's construction environment, it's actually cheaper to build new than it would be to do like a stem to stern remodel of City Hall. So, um, right now we're, we're gonna work on getting another probably five to ten years of growth out of City Hall. But at that point, we're gonna have to make some tough decisions as far as what we do with the future of this end of the building. The, just as a reminder, this, this wing of the building, the three-story wing over here is about two thousand seven or eight. It's in very good condition and there's no, nothing that's really going to be done with that building. It's basically everything this direction that has been.
What's on the third floor these days? Is it still the congressional office or?
Correct. It's, it's a, it's a combination of the congressperson's office as well as some storage. And so it's likely in the, in the real short term that we'll have probably a city department that would go up there to fill space because it's, it's there. There's not much we need to do to, to make it occupiable. It's, it's easy to move into. So that, that would give us some immediate space for others. Uh, so, for example, H R, which could use that space there. They need a little bit more, um, privacy and, and, you know, they would benefit from that. Would likely be able to use that third floor and that would free up this first floor of this building where H R is right now.
Thank you.
Hey, any other questions from Ryan? Or Brian? Hey, can you check?
Yeah, so we do have somebody in the audience. If you do want to testify in the public hearing for capital facilities plan amendment, go ahead and use the raise hand function and we can go ahead and bring you in. Going once, going twice. I don't see anybody.
All righty, so, uh, the request is a motion that make the recommendation from the planning commission on the interim update to the city council.
So I've been in a motion.
So I'm looking for a motion.
So I would move that we forward this to the city council with with our approval.
Second.
Who seconded? Questions? Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, a little bit forward. And now that is the end of the public hearing. And we will go forward back to our meeting under new business. We'll hand this off for the carbon sequestration white paper. Hans?
Hello, everyone. I have a couple slides that I would like to share, so I will get that going. This is going to be a relatively brief presentation, uh, just as kind of a summary of some of the early findings of the carbon sequestration white paper that was completed by T R P C. Everybody see the slide deck?
Yeah.
Wonderful. So, uh, as part of your packet, you should have received, uh, both the actual white paper itself and the appendices to go along with it. That kind of gets into more of the nuts and bolts of where some of the findings are coming from. So this is just going to be kind of a brief recap of some of the content that was found in there. So this was, as I just stated, uh, something that was completed by T R P C as part of their, uh, twenty twenty-two, uh, work plan, I believe. So we are pretty excited to have it. It's, uh, an important precursor to a lot of the actions and strategies that are identified currently within the T C M P. So in order to kind of move forward on those actions, we kind of have to have that baseline knowledge and understanding of how we're doing currently and where we're at. So this paper seeks to provide some of that information. And just at a high level to really kind of cover what carbon sequestration is. Uh, it's a process that removes carbon dioxide from the atmosphere and stores it in a range of different ways, including soil, vegetation and the ocean. Carbon sequestration is also commonly referred to as carbon dioxide removal or C D R and negative emissions technologies, so N E Ts. And that's more kind of using, utilizing technology to actually extract it from the air. And then just kind of going into kind of how the cycle works a little bit more in depth. It is both something that naturally occurs on its own, uh, just through the existence of kind of the cycles that we have in our environment. And then also is something that can be utilized or enhanced to actually mitigate climate change. These actions can be, uh, yeah, they're utilized to offset, uh, specifically, uh, greenhouse gas emissions from other sources. And I will note that all pathways that were identified with, uh, by the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, also known as the I P C C. So they're the ones that kind of set, uh, global standards and, and, uh, limits that we want to hit. So, uh, all of the kind of objectives. Sorry, I'm getting caught up here. So in order to limit global warming to one point five degrees Celsius, uh, all of those scenarios and options require, uh, carbon sequestration in some format to accomplish that. So, uh, that will be a necessary, uh, tool to utilize really kind of to hit that. So kind of at the local level, looking at some of the report findings. It went through existing actions within our T C M P and evaluated those based on their ability really to, uh, perform and actually, yeah, create carbon sequestration. Uh, so specifically expanding regenerative agriculture, uh, reforestation, prairie preservation, uh, extending timber harvest. So right now they're at that thirty to forty year kind of cycle. So looking at extending those out to the seventy to eighty years, uh, and then also title, uh, wetland restoration. All of those collectively, uh, within the plan as it's written today, have the potential to increase sequestration totals by around a hundred and twenty-two to three hundred and fourteen hundred thousand, uh, metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent per year. So with the goals that are in our plan today, they, they do actually fall short of the T C M P sequestration target goals of three hundred and eighty hundred thousand, uh, metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent per year over the existing baseline, uh, by the year twenty fifty. So the kind of high level goal is set within the T C M P and then there's also actions listed out within the T C M P to achieve that goal. And one of the high level takeaways from the paper is that those actions, as are currently stated, don't actually meet that sequestration target. So that's something we're going to have to look at moving forward. One of the areas that it did go into some pretty significant depth, their investigation was looking at existing forests within Thurston County. Uh, they sequester around nine hundred and twenty-seven hundred thousand M T C O, uh, two equivalents per year. And that's kind of what's going to be used moving forward as the estimated baseline, uh, to monitor progress over time. So, one quick note on that, uh, there are other formats where sequester, sequestration takes place, uh, including in agriculture and prairies, but right now we don't have the sufficient data points to really kind of do a full investigation of those. So that's something uh, that we'll see later on, uh, as part of the recommendations is to get that information so we can perform this type of analysis on those land uses as well. But as of the paper today, we don't have the information to really do a fair comparison on those land use types. The paper did put forward a range of, uh, options or strategies that can be utilized to increase our, uh, sequestration. These include avoiding forest conversion, uh, restoring forest areas, extending timber, uh, timber harvest rotations. And collectively, those have the potential to increase our sequestration ability by a hundred and thirty to four hundred and six, uh, a hundred thousand M T C O twos, uh, per year. One of the things that it did note within the paper though, is that that high range is, uh, pretty ambitious and based on current practices, uh, within the region. It, it seems potentially unfeasible. It really kind of requires a full stop on a lot of activities and actions that will take some time to, to slow down, kind of redirect. So as far as conversions of forest lands, uh, dramatically changing forest practices and planting trees on large areas of open space and agricultural lands are all kind of necessary to hit that high end of that range. So the paper did suggest that while that is, you know, technically feasible, it's not necessarily realistic based on current, uh, situations and standards. Uh, I did throw this slide in here, uh, because I did.
Can I, uh, just clarify, um, the things that aren't really happening at the moment are the barriers are really in the rural and, and forest lands, right? Not in the urban growth areas in the cities.
Exactly. And that's actually what this slide is about right here. So within the T C M P, a lot of the actions focus on development practices. And it really does emphasize developing urban areas. And a big reason, uh, behind that is both based on our G M A growth allocations requirements, but also it's kind of a balancing act where you, uh, emphasize development in the urban areas at the same time, uh, reducing and taking away that stress and development demand from our more rural areas. Um, and one of the findings of this paper is that right now, uh, rural areas, sorry, struggling with that, rural areas have the bulk of forested lands and are seeing the highest rate of forest land convergence. So there's the highest rate of tree removal essentially happening in our forest areas. So that's a big, uh, potential area, both as opportunity, but also as kind of where that, uh, risk is taking place. So this map does a semi-decent idea of just kind of showing where those potential sequestration opportunities exist. Uh, the darker the green, the higher the potential or the opportunity is. Uh, and this is something that was, uh, pulled together by the Nature Conservancy and reference within the white paper. So you can see that the, particularly the northern, uh, cities don't have a whole lot of potential compared to some of the more rural areas where you see that darker green.
I might point out one other thing. You can go back to the planning.
Yeah, for sure.
Like, for example, the, the light, lightest, lightest green, um, doesn't necessarily mean that there aren't trees there. I, I mean, more like capital forest is what I'm kind of pointing at, yeah. So it doesn't mean that there's not trees there. It just means that the potential for the sequestration is the lowest because it's already forested. Versus like if you look around Yelm, Yelm mostly prairie area, so the the ability to sequester more carbon in that area is higher. So it's kind of an odd way to kind of think about it in terms of like existing, more existing forests, the less. Opportunity it has versus like if there's not as much forest, if it's prairie land. You know, go down to Grand Mound or Rochester and start planting a bunch of trees and that's where you're gonna get a lot of bang for your buck for carbon sequestration.
And that's a great point that existing trees are not going to improve our sequestration ability, they're already factored into kind of our baseline. So just purely by maintaining existing trees, it's not gonna get us necessarily any closer to that number. So it's looking at other areas where we can make a improvement on top of what already kind of our existing baseline is.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, for sure.
How do we balance, you're talking about the baseline of the forest and this this mandate to. Take care of this problem, but how do we balance that baseline that's been calculated with? All of the forested areas most recently that have been taken down. There are three apartment buildings, new apartment buildings going up and the new townhouse development. So when do you start subtracting that away from your baseline operating number?
For sure, so this study, I think the analysis for this was completed last year predominantly. So it was a snapshot in time of where we're currently at as far as forests and tree canopy. So the, in order to look at that, I think it runs through it actually pretty well in the appendix as far as what that process was to get get to that number. So by rerunning that analysis, we'll be able to see kind of that transition over time and whether or not that's a net increase or loss in forest canopy. What it does recognize is that there needs to, there is a population allocation that we need to accommodate, generally speaking, within Thurston County. And a lot of the goals push that towards the urban areas with recognition that by doing so, it frees up the rural areas to remain more rural. In their kind of native state, if you will. So that's, that's what is getting at here is that. The TCMP actions that address rural reforestation options and replanning options have the potential to kind of increase. Our our sequestration capacity, but they do need to be, those goals should be relooked at and increased in order to really kind of hit those numbers that we're looking to hit. Yeah, so potential areas of focus, so at the end of the paper, it did provide kind of a summary. Of areas where based on these findings, what are the next steps that we can take and what what can we look at? So actions that preserve and increase sequestration potential in rural forests, that's really far and beyond the largest one that was hit throughout this paper. They come back to that a good amount and that's really where we get the largest bang for the buck is I think Ryan was referencing. And then align existing programs with sequestration goals, that's getting back to looking at our existing goals within the TCMP. And even if we. Implement each one of those, we do actually fall short of the goals set in the TCMP as it's currently written, so. Increasing those action items, so those target numbers, so how much reforestation are we doing, how much? What kind of harvest timelines we're working on, that kind of thing, so by extending those. We can increase those action items ability to really kind of address the sequestration needed to hit that goal. And then fill priority data gaps, so that's getting back at that land use one, so looking at. Prairies and other land use types and their ability to sequester carbon as well, so right now we kind of have the information necessary to get a pretty good understanding of. Forests and trees, but we're missing that information for other land use types that do offer that opportunity as well. And then strengthen working relationships among other community partners, so partners like Thurston Conservation District, Capital Land Trust. Southland Sound Community Farmland Trust, WSC Extension. These are all other community partners and organizations that work in this area and can provide valuable resources to advance these goals. Yeah, and then, so that's, those are the key findings and then these strategies. Are gonna be shared with community at large, this is kind of the early final draft, if you will. And then we're gonna take this paper and look at the actions within the TCMP and see if there's any revisions that need to take place on that front as well. But that is kind of the quick summary of the paper, so if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I did have a question. I was. As we're constantly talking about the the tree canopy and I'm noticing in some neighborhoods. There's, there's one HOA over by the farm there, you could see the sidewalk buckling a little bit by the trees and so they cut down all of the trees in the HOA. And so the only the miniature ornamental trees were left standing from what I could tell for the most part and I'm kind of seeing that in other areas where. People are planting trees to address the need to have so many trees per area as part of of. The permitting process, but then as soon as those trees start to grow. Knowing full well, but you know, when we, I think we read the tree report, we know how large, wide and deep it needs to accommodate certain types of trees. But even though that information is there, plans are being approved and trees are getting planted. That are ultimately gonna have to cut down a few years down the road, is there anything that's being put in place to prevent? Planting trees to get permits approved, just to have them cut down a few years later and what's happening to those trees? To replace those trees that are getting removed that are essential to maintaining the tree city status that we have.
Yeah, absolutely, so. There's definitely true requirements that we have within our residential communities specifically, so it sounds like kind of what we're talking about. And in order to get building permits, that needs to be something that's addressed. And the placement of those trees is something that is factored in and considered as part of that permitting process. Specifically with that intent because we we do want those trees to be successful and purely by placing them, you know, directly next to the right of way. Trees grow larger and that creates other impacts, so that is just definitely something that's factored in. Because those trees, our goal is for them to continue growing and to become large trees and continually sequester more. Carbon along with other amenities and benefits that they do offer. That's not to say that. That's always successful and that we do run into scenarios where those trees do get to a point where they do start impacting sidewalks. So there is some removal that does take place as part of that. And we do have a permitting process that is designed to really kind of address that. Both create a pathway forward, but also keep a tally of how many trees are removed and making sure that we still hit those. Numbers and in some cases, there is the requirement to replant if we fall below those number, the the requirement for those lots. So that's, that's the plan that we have in place, Ryan, yeah?
Yeah, and for planning commission members that have been on planning commission for a little while, you might remember we recently updated our urban forest management plan and. You know, an important, there are two important elements of that, that the city has identified that we haven't necessarily put the resources towards. And number one is education, right? So why are trees important, why is it important to retain those trees that have been planted rather than taking them out? And the other part of that is enforcement. We we lack the the staff to be able to do the enforcement to go, you know, make sure the trees that have been planted are per their plans are still there after the development's been completed. So those are, those are a couple of gaps that we've definitely identified and the and the planning commission has actually stood up and I believe said. Ren recommended, we need to have our own city arborist, our own staff to be able to go and and take care of that, so. Planning commission is well aware of that, I think, you know, for the purpose of this presentation, you know, the point is, is that we're, you know, that there are. For the purpose of carbon sequestration, there is a big burden put on the county to be able to do that. You know, we've talked about the Growth Management Act, which is, you know, the the purpose of that is to. Urbanize the urban areas and keep the rural rural and prevent sprawl. And if, you know, if we preserve more acres of trees in the city, then, you know, basically that encourages sprawl because people aren't able to to live on there. So they have to move to the the hinterlands, which then limits our ability to do carbon sequestration in the rural county. Urban forest wise, there are certainly carbon benefits that the trees provide in the city. But if you look at it from the overall system, it's it's a relatively minor part of the carbon sequestration discussion. The bulk of this is to be done by the rural county. And so that's the purpose of this report really is really important, especially now that Thurston County is doing their comprehensive plan update. Is to make sure that they're well aware of the, you know, the necessary steps that that are required to make sure that carbon sequestration can happen in the county. So for example, we have a an urban forest management plan with tree regulations. Thurston County and the rural area does not have any specific tree regulations, nor do they have a a forest management plan that covers Thurston County. So, you know, it's such a vital resource that does so much for carbon sequestration, there's, there's nothing there. So it's really to try to encourage and and, you know. Keep the discussion going when when Thurston County is updating all their plans and policies to say, hey, really, if we're working, this is a regional issue, we're working on to all this together. We need to make sure that we're able to meet our carbon sequestration goals and in that, the county has a really heavy burden to lift to to make sure that that happens.
Well, the neighborhood I live in is in the urban growth area and 20 some odd years ago, when they planted all the trees in the. The curbing area of it, those trees started buckling the sidewalks. Very expensive for the HOA, we literally tore all those out and replanted with the right kind of tree that is not gonna affect the sidewalks, but it's so it was just. Back to education, plant the right tree and it can stay there for forever. Plant the wrong tree and you're creating other issues, safety issues with sidewalks and things. But it was very expensive to redo.
That's a great point and we've gotten a lot better about identifying the appropriate trees that are required as part of the permit process. And to just. Point, build on Ryan's point, if you take the, all the apartment complexes, the number of units. And put them into the rural lands, each one on a five acre parcel, that's where you get. You know, the the methodology for urbanizing, which lowers your carbon footprint. Per person and per household and that's, that's the primary recommendation out of the Sustainable Thurston project that we underwent in the mid mid decade. And also is. Kind of. Copied in the, in the climate, Thurston Climate Action Plan.
I think, Ryan, you you did say education is really important because I hear all the time from people. The city's just chopping down trees all over the place.
So we heard that in our survey feedback too.
Absolutely, and and I think that. To provide the education that says it's not just the trees, it's the land that's out there that if you move those. If you save those trees and move those apartment buildings out onto the rural land, you are making the situation worse and not better.
Right.
But but people don't think of that land as being carbon sequestration, they think of trees because that's what they see.
Yeah.
And education, I think, too, could extend to the commercial locations. I mean, some of these big businesses are stewards of the forests as well. We're on a golf course in Meridian Campus and they were chopping down trees, didn't realize there's a permit. And there happened to be an HOA board member witnessing it and said, those are, do you know about getting a permit? Those are very mature trees and you're making a change here and they stopped immediately, said, no, our boss just told us to come out and cut these down. So they stopped as soon as the board member intervened and contacted the city. But I think education to the businesses like golf courses, they manage forest land too.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, and you know, even even trees in parking lots, you know, parking lot islands here, you're in a really hot environment, especially in the summertime, you know, kind of a. You know, asphalt wasteland with trees in it, you know, people, especially business owners and big companies that that have big parking lots, don't think about the benefits that those trees provide. They just think, man, that tree is blocking my sign, I need to take it down, right? So, so. Exactly, yeah, so yeah, you're exactly, you're exactly right, there's a lot of benefits, not only from a residential standpoint, educating our, you know, our residents. But also our businesses and the benefits that the trees do provide and it, you know, in a more developed commercial setting as well.
People to ask this question to, but I am, I was very curious about. My students and I are doing water quality testing and participating in the student green congress and we were looking at the leaf fall from the deciduous trees. And in the stream that we're testing, our oxygen, the dissolved oxygen dropped by one, I think it's whatever the unit is. Which made it not very friendly for salmon or for for other other fish. And I was wondering if the sequestration of carbon and the benefit from. You know, because I was reading the report talking about, you know, reforesting or. Aforestation for the riparian zones, I was wondering if they've done a study about the deciduous versus the evergreen trees or even putting. Different types of trees within the grasslands, is that part of? Of what's kind of in the process or what they're thinking about carbon sequestration and? Is there an ideal type of tree to plant in this area?
So yeah, this is definitely the first step that's gonna allow us to really kind of take, investigate all those other questions that we have about it. I don't know that we've got as granular with what type of trees go where in that sense. That is something that we look at within the city of Lacey, for sure, within our plans and recommendations, based on where these trees are getting planted. There are some trees that will do better purely just based on what types of habitats they prefer and how they grow. But yeah, specific to riparian areas and oxygen levels, I know that just through kind of the natural tree selection, there are gonna be types of trees that do better in those zones and others. Because of the increased water content within the soil. But I don't know that that's something that we're specifically looking at at this time.
Most of the trees in the urban area, at least, the the research that I've seen is really mostly related to deciduous trees because of the. You know, the bigger canopy that they provide, they provide, you know, the the surface area on their leaves that provides more. Is it transpiration, that more evaporation, you know, those kinds of things on their leaves, so it prevents less water from hitting the ground and and more, you know, which. Lessens the stormwater impacts, you also have less conflicts with things like, you know, with structures and that kind of thing. When you're dealing with a a tree that has leaves versus, you know, conifer, which can be a little bit more aggressive and, you know, more of a maintenance issue. Over time, so. Good question, though, I I don't, I don't, I I've never heard of the specific requirements as far as which type of tree, but I think it's very. Tremendous topic, so let you know if there's what we find out.
Hey, any more questions or on? Or Ryan will answer.
So this was just an informational interview or an interview informational item, so no action that that's needed, just wanna bring you up to date that this has been completed, it's been in the works for some time. And so wanted to provide this to you to get a little bit more context on.
So what is the county's timetable for? Filling in these rather large gaps there.
They're, they're, they're have actually started working on their comp plan update, I know they've done some surveying, I believe. Community surveying to to get things kind of started, so I I do know that they're they're underway on their their large comp plan update. But it really takes everybody to be involved and and, you know, raise your voice when the time comes to make sure that the. The county's doing what they should be doing when it comes to protecting the rural areas and for a long time, we've had discussions just internally that, you know, a lot of the the county is at a five acre zoning. And five acre zoning, it's not the most productive in terms of. Either agricultural land or forestry land, it's just kind of this, you know, it's it's a big, big yard. And so, you know, it, I think what we will be looking at is making sure that they maybe start downzoning portions to be more appropriate to. You know, limiting the amount of rural development sprawl that they be encouraging through the five acre tracts.
Alrighty, any old business, I don't have any. Communications and announcements?
From, further from us, I don't think.
Okay. Our next meeting is April 4th, the work session meeting and it's gonna be on the Gwendolyn Retreat Center, comp plan amendment and rezon application. The work session meeting and it's going to be on the Gwendolyn Retreat Center, Comp Plan Amendment and Rezone Application. So is, are we anticipating somebody from that group being here?
Correct. Yep. Yep. They are submitting their application for the the rezones. This is just an introductory briefing in preparation for future public hearing on the rezone. Remember, this is the property that's at the southwest corner of Hicks Lake.
Yeah.
Alrighty. And
future meeting place for the planning commission.
It's beautiful out there. I'll, I'll volunteer. I'll go out there. It's really cool.
Okay. Well, at this point, a little earlier than usual.
Sure is.
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Do something productive at home.
It's still daily.